Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Good morning, everyone, welcome to the February 26th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Lundey has our word of the day.
Our inspirational word, love one another with mutual affection, outdo one another in showing honor.
Thank you. And our dog warden has our dog from the kennel this morning.
He's a cutie.
It's Toto, from the Wizard of Oz.
Good morning, this is kennel number 31. They're calling him Toto up here. But he's about two years old, found in Elyria, available on Friday, the 28th, and we have 19 other dogs.
Aw. Thank you.
Aye, Toto.
Hopefully we got a better shot of him than that. All right, Madam Clerk.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Not advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordes.
Thank you, Madam President.
That sounds great, doesn't it?
Doesn't it sound good? I do have a couple of items I wish to discuss with the Board, more specifically, ongoing labor negotiations with United Steelworkers of America, purchase of a few parcels of land that we've been working on, potential hires at the collection center, possibly in custodial, I want to go over those apps with you, I just don't see my sheet, there may be more of those, but I'll have to look later, and one pending legal matter, Council may have more of those, I don't know who you made mad this week, so, all those subjects are, excuse me, my tongue ties money, all of those subjects are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask if we go into executive session at the conclusion of a regular Board meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading in the midst of February 19th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Men Resolution 2115, adopted February 12th, approving internal lease agreement with Larry Women's Club for parking at 218 East Avenue, said amendment is to reflect there will be 43 spaces rather than 35 spaces that it costs us $645 per month.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized Administrator to issue notification of a potential tax increment financing project in Larry Township to City of Larry School District in Lorraine County JVS in accordance with the ORC 5709.83 for Spielberg Orchard Site.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Enter an agreement with Barbara and Huffman, Inc., Cleveland, amount of $43,250 to perform construction administration phase services for the parking garage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Brown Robinson Funeral Home, Lorraine, for injured veteran Oris H. Danley, Elyria, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized lease agreement with Lorraine County Port Authority for 5,000 square feet of Unit 2 at 530 South Abbey Road, Elyria, in the annual amount of $66,996, effective retroactive January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2024, and renewable every January 1st, first base of 530.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Men Resolution 19606, adopted or dated September 25th, 2019, authorizing entering a service agreement with National Alliance Security Agency, Inc., in Dalla, Ohio, in the amount of $66,993.87 for security services from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, amendment is to reflect service provider name is U.S. Security Associates, Inc., DBA and Allied Universal Company, Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Sanitary Engineer, approved and entered agreement for professional engineering services agreed with K. McCartney and Associates, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $44,000. This is part of the ongoing discussions on the development of the former Spielberg property at Northeast Corner of Broadway and State Route 2, paid from the sanitary engineer account. Authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Stormwater, reject all bids received for the Grafton Road directional drilling project and readvertise.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordes, the reason why we're rejecting the bids for Grafton Road?
I do not, I actually really did not ask why we were doing that.
Don's coming up.
Somebody here?
Yep.
There we go.
Oh, wait a minute, I can explain it, Don, I got it, excuse me, I'm thinking where we had it stationed, that's the one we received for the class property, early on, that was way too high and we reverted to a different engineering situation to do that work, we never really officially rejected that bid. So, in order to just, it's a housekeeping.
Okay, good, because I was thinking, oh gosh, are we starting over with this again?
It's easy to understand why we're rejecting it as well.
Yes, yes, it's just, we're cleaning up the paperwork, so it never got officially done, so, thank you, and excuse my, I was working on something else.
That's okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Children's Services, authorized various personnel to utilize the agency's Mastercard in the amount not to exceed $2,500 in accordance with the permissible policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Engineer, accept and journalize the 2019 report on bridges for Lorraine County. Currently, there are 232 bridges ranging in span from 10 feet to 305 feet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Award contract to D.L. Smith Concrete LLC, Normak, in the amount of $224,901 for the Larry Township project, five bids received on 2/14, being the most responsive complying with specifications, project will install sidewalks along south side of Griswold Road from Lake Avenue to Manor Drive, ODOT will provide 100% of the project cost, issue notice proceed letter effective on or about March 1st, and complete honor before August 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approved and entered professional service agreement with QCI, Inc., Bedford, in the amount of $58,058 to provide construction administration and inspection services for the Elyria project, this is 100% funded by ODOT, authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Health District, approve change orders for public health building projects, sites builders number 7, in the amount of $3,127.25 to adjust the ceiling plan, Electrical Corp of America, Inc., number 4, in the amount of $302 for data drop.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Before we go, Mr. Cordes, I would like to go back to item number 11 regarding the TIF for the Spielberg Orchard, we kind of blew past it and I think we might want to do some-
I was a little surprised, I kind of looked up.
I didn't see you look up, otherwise, because I thought you-
You guys, I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about it or not.
Yeah.
Please.
I mean, I just want to make sure before we have this discussion that we have not had anything official from the company involved before we-
Right, we can talk around the fringe, we have a nondisclosure-
Right.
-on the issue, but it's an ongoing project that we've worked with Elyria, Elyria Township, Lorraine, we've modified jets, put new jets into place, got agreements, got sewer agreements, so we need to build sewers down there, so the way we're going to do that is with TIF dollars, I can tell you that after probably a year or two ramping into this, it's going to be 400-plus jobs, we're very excited about that, we met with the company, was it Tuesday, Don, we met with them, for an extensive period of time, everything's tracking nicely, there's some things, other things we have to take care of, we could guard to, we need some turning lanes, stoplights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so we're moving through the issues, but we need to get the tax incremental financing done, we're proposing right now, it'll look like we're going to be working on a 1075, but we have to go through all that process. This is, it's not Ford announcing thousands of jobs, but this is probably the biggest one we've had in a long, long time, and I believe that they'll even be in excess of, well in excess of 400 over the first three years of operation out there, we got to get it built though, we got to get it here, and we're still under a nondisclosure, it's probably one of the best not-kept secrets in Lorraine County, but we still can't confirm anything-
Right.
-with regard to who it is and what they're doing, a lot of it has to do with, they're still doing the due diligence with the property and there's a closing window and everything's on track, I'm very comfortable.
Good.
So, I want to get this done so it's in place because we're going to need to start digging really fast, instead of having, instead of doing it all at one time, we're probably going to do this in two phases, so we can get the sewer service upgraded down to where they need to bring it into the site, and then we'll catch up with the second phase after that, this way we can start to dig as early as possible, we waited with the whole thing in at one time, we may miss some deadlines, they need to get moving, I will tell you that normally this company doesn't do a groundbreaking, they normally do a ribbon cutting after it's all over, but they said they're going to break with habit and they're going to do a ribbon cutting sometime later, excuse me, groundbreaking sometime later this year for the first time, I think, in the company's history.
Oh, good.
They really like working out here, they're really excited with our workforce out here, so, things are looking up.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I think, you know, it's important to point out, like I said before, and you pointed out, we have this nondisclosure agreement, so until the company is ready for it to be disclosed, we're honoring that agreement, and, you know, it's so important when you work on economic development projects to have the trust and the assurance of the companies or corporations that you're working with, otherwise businesses don't want to come into your community and do business with you, no business or company likes their business out on Front Street, and they certainly don't appreciate when politicians run to the front page of the newspaper, telling what's supposed to be internal, you know, negotiations that are taking place with their company, these are always sensitive matters because there's employees involved, sometimes you have a company that's a publicly traded company, and so it can be, you know, very sensitive, and also companies don't like to telegraph to their competitors what their strategic plans are, so, we are, you know, honoring this nondisclosure agreement at the time that the company is willing to release us from that, I would hope that we would have a joint announcement, because this is probably one of the best examples you're ever going to find of a true partnership between governmental leaders, whether it's at the county level, the local level, the township level, the city level, the state level, you name it, all across the board, and it's one of these things that you'll learn more about, the workings behind the scenes, I can't say enough good things about our county administrator who played a major role in a lot of these negotiations, and I want to thank you publicly for that, and will when the time comes, when we can make it official, but I know you've spent endless hours, and I can tell you, we've had nothing but words of praise from the company about the way that Mr. Cordes has helped navigate these waters, it's not easy to get everybody on the same page, there are some people who were at the table who are no longer at the table, but played a major role in bringing this ship to the harbor and making it possible, so, we'll make the announcement at the appropriate time, but for now, I hope you understand that we're honoring this nondisclosure agreement, and it's good for now, and it's certainly good for seeking future companies to come to Lorraine County.
Get out. Yep.
Public comment.
Public comment, anybody wishing to address the Board this morning? No, see none?
Mr. Cordes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I don't have anything further this morning, thank you. Well, unless you're going to remind people of the Mardi Gras.
I brought my stuff.
All right, okay, so I won't steal your thunder, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
Two things, I did, about that Grafton Road project, I did talk to Peter Zwick, and the bids are due on March 9th on that one, so, that's going along, and I talked with the attorney for the property owners, and everything is okay.
Still going along.
Other than that, I have one matter of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
See, it has to be nice and then he has to slip that in.
Yeah. They say it's good news first.
Commissioners' report.
We had a meeting of our census chairs for our subcommittee for our complete count census effort that is going on in Lorraine County, we want to make sure everybody gets counted, once again, a reminder, April 1 is officially Census Day, so wherever you are on that day is where you're supposed to be counted, that means wherever your home is on April, it's not where you're working that day.
Not vacation.
So, we don't end up in the Elyria couches because we're having a meeting or something on that day, but it is going extremely well, can't say enough good things about the feedback that we're getting from state leaders, the feedback we're getting from the Census Bureau itself, the National Census Bureau, they're really impressed by the way everybody's coming together, we'll be collaborating again with some of the foundations and seeing if they'll be giving us a sign-off on providing some support for having a actual coordinator to coordinate the initiative and get the word out about it, but the meetings have been going well, got another follow-up tomorrow, and also wanted to congratulate Community Care in North Ridgeville, they had a beautiful event on Saturday at Elegant Assets Event Center, first time I was there, an old school building that's been converted into an event center, and it was good, we were all packed in, it was one big family, I think 10 or 11 people at the table, so, thank goodness Lori and Sharon aren't lefties or whatever, we've been taking some hits to the ribs, but it was a very nice dinner, nice event, and they do a lot of good things in North Ridgeville, and I know sometimes people have the perception, there are some communities that don't have families in need, every community has families in need, and believe me, they get a lot of requests for food assistance and other assistance in that community, also had the opportunity yesterday to attend the recovery court graduation, I don't think there was a dry eye in the House, when you hear these stories, it's amazing, the uphill climb that these individuals have accomplished, and yet it's just the beginning, because once you have an issue with addiction, it's a lifelong issue, every morning you wake up, you have an addiction that you have to stare in the face and deal with, and can't say enough about how we continue to stress that addiction is a disease, you don't just simply flip a switch and all of a sudden you're healed, and you don't have any addiction issues anymore, but a great job on Judge John Maraldi and his whole team, helping out and getting these people back on track, and when you hear the stories, if you ever think your life is rough, I'd venture to guess in most cases, not as rough as some of these folks have had it, but just so glad to see the progress we're making there, and looking forward to the Mardi Gras celebration this weekend, but I'm going to let you guys talk more about that.
Okay.
So, looking forward to it, it's a great party, I think we had a couple posts on Facebook this morning, I saw Jim put something up, and put something up as well, too, it's an event you don't want to miss.
Well, thank you, Thursday I had my County Commissioners Association General Government Operations meeting, and we're discussing bills pending or being brought forward by the state, and they're looking at distracted driving laws, they're talking about being able to pull you over for having your phone in your hand, not just texting and driving, and I know more needs to be, more needs to be done, there's nothing worse than getting behind somebody when they're swerving, or slowing down, or speeding up, because they are not focused on the road, they're focused on their phone, we also discussed the fact that they're looking at first responders being eligible for workman's comp if they have PTSD, and it originally had a one-year cap associated, which would double the current premiums that are being paid now, but since then, they've removed the one-year cap, so I'm hoping that more thought's going to go into how this is going to be diagnosed and how it's going to be funded, Thursday, I drove down to Columbus for my executive board meeting, for Thursday evening, and we had our full board meeting on Friday, and then Saturday I took Sharon Sveda's advice and attended the women's awareness class put on by our Lorraine County Prosecutor Dennis Will at Lorraine County Community College, and it was a two hours well-spent, and I did talk to somebody last night, and they are going to be hosting some more of these, and I would highly recommend anybody to go to this, because it was really, really good, gives you ideas and techniques on how to defend yourself in situations, using your voice, so you can get the attention of other people, so you're not a target, and hopefully get some help if somebody's trying to come up on you, so, that was a great event, Saturday evening, like Commissioner Lundey said, we all attended the Soup for the Spirit event, which raises money for residents who are in need in North Ridgeville, we had a great table of educators from North Ridgeville who made it a really enjoyable evening, and the place was packed, so I'm sure they made a lot of money for the families of North Ridgeville, Tuesday morning I had my Community Corrections Board meeting, and it was brought to my attention, unfortunately, that our probation department is not able to use Silver Maple to send our probationers to, because there's some type of qualifications that they're not able to meet, so they can go there for detox, but as soon as they're detoxed, they have to leave and be transported outside of the county, and I'm concerned that the needs are still not being met here, and a lot of money is being spent at this non, for this for-profit company while the justice system still has to transport our probationers to other counties, after that meeting, I enjoyed Judge Maraldi's recovery court graduation, there were only two graduates, but the room was filled up like there were 10 people graduating, and it just shows you how much support there is out there and the good work that's being done by the treatment team for the recovery court, and these people are, like Commissioner Lundey said, they're getting their lives back, and it's just wonderful to see, I'll let Sharon elaborate on the Mardi Gras, but if you didn't get your tickets, you need to get your tickets, it's going to be the party of the year, so I'll let you elaborate.
All right, well then I'll open with that, Mardi Gras Saturday night, but don't forget that this was Mardi Gras week as well, we have lots of participating vendors who have specialty meals and drinks available, if you go in with a passport, you can acquire a passport at one of the vendors, or from Visit Lorraine County, you get them stamped, you can receive not just a passport and beads, but an opportunity to have your name entered to win a very nice basket from New Orleans, and then on Saturday night, we top it off with our food tasting at LCC with the concert that follows, Terrence Simeon, two-time Grammy Award winner, and it's going to be good, it was great last year, and this is year number two, I understand that our ticket sales are well ahead of last year, so really do get online and get those tickets so that you aren't disappointed.
$10 for the food concert?
And 25 for food and concert, and that's a food tasting prepared by the Culinary Arts Students at LCC, which never fails.
And I always have to get in my plug, free parking.
Free parking. Exactly.
Couple things, if I may add on.
Yes, please do.
Valets available, some folks, it's a big parking lot there, and some folks do have some mobility issues, so the valet will be available, it's not free valet, but it's available, it's a $5 valet charge, especially if the weather's bad, you can end up on the far end of those parking lots.
Yes.
So, we've arranged to, for that, also today's the last day to purchase the food tickets.
Whoa.
At last count, we had about 250 in the food area, it's filling up pretty quick, and that was, my count was from Monday morning, so it may even be more than that, so that's closing out pretty quick, but there's concert tickets available to just see the show, and let's not forget, if you do the food ticket, we have a pre-band, we have a Northeast Ohio Swamp Boogie Band playing, and they're going to be doing some things, and then there's going to be some demonstration of Zydeco dancing in the main area spitzer while we're all chowing down, and there's going to be prizes and raffles and all kinds of things going on, so it's a celebration.
And regardless of temperature, we'll warm it up inside.
I just want to know, you guys are going to be dancing on the stage this year, it's so, we need to pack, we need to pack the theater and bring friends from Cuyahoga County, Erie, you know, so forth, and for $10, just for the show, if you don't want to do anything else, you're not going to get a better show anywhere for $10 with a Grammy Award winner out of New Orleans, first time I heard this gentleman, I was in New Orleans for the French Quarter Fest, which is a big deal down there, and he was one of the main stage acts, so this is not something small.
And he's engaging, he gets the whole audience into it.
Oh, yes, absolutely, so I'm hopeful-
No tickets at the door, though?
There'll be tickets for the concert at the door, not for the food event, so, after this afternoon, you can still go to the box office at Stockard and purchase a ticket, or you can buy them online, I wish I didn't bring it with me.
I have it, it is, can they get them at Visit Lorraine County?
Well, Visit Lorraine County will direct them to the website for the Stockard Center where they can purchase tickets online, and I believe they're printing, you can get electronic ticket, you print it out.
Then it's www.loraine, visitlorreencounty.com/mardi-gras.
And if you just get to the no forward slash, you'll still be able to navigate through the button stack.
You will, it'll get you there.
So, please come out, and we're looking forward to each year improving this event so it becomes a destination event.
Excellent, so, on Wednesday evening was the annual CHIPS debate, there were some interesting conversations last Wednesday evening, Thursday, we did do a TV promo for the Mardi Gras with Robbie over at Coles, and that was, Robbie always delivers, let me just say, so they are one of the participating restaurants, we had, as Commissioner Lundey said, our census subcommittee heads met on Thursday afternoon, and then later that night, I went to the break-off meeting at the Urban League with the Elyria folks, and they are just planning out how they are going to be reaching Elyria residents, as they are charged to do, and on Thursday evening was our Township trustee meetings, oh, it was in Elyria, another great dinner, those dinners, if I wasn't a member, I think I'd go for the dinners, but it was well-attended, and then a reminder that just before Mardi Gras event on Saturday, the Urban League is having their chili cook-off at 3 o'clock, so 3 to 6 is the chili cook-off at the Urban League, Friday night was difference makers for leadership Lorraine County, proud of all, and a congratulations to all the recipients, Eric Nord, Claire Seagan Young, David Newey Nodel, Stacy Starr, and the Nord Center, not a dry eye in that room either, as we heard the stories of their charity and their humble giving back to our community, and it was interesting, we did have a guest speaker who, when he got, he was speaking and addressing what it takes to be a leader, and it has to be about outwardly focused, but he kept mentioning Claire, who was one of the recipients, how she made a comment in her speech that was life-altering for him, and that he wanted to see her afterward, and kind of a little interesting tidbit, he did speak with her after the event, and it seems that his own son has wrestled with some of the issues of mental health and addiction, and Claire mentioned in her speech that she views those victims as courageous individuals, that every day they have to get up, they must be courageous, and that that was life-altering for him, and And he said he was going to go home and treat his son differently.
Aw.
Oh, wow.
So, and he offered her a job, but she refused. She said, "No, I'm retired," so, but it was great, it was a great moving event. And also, early on Friday was the All-Day Wellington Kiwanis Pancake Day, and we were able to get some good pancakes out there in Wellington. Saturday, I attended a reception by, held by the Matriots, an organization who supports women candidates. I attended the Wellington Ducky Downs Race. If you've ever been to a horse race, go to a Ducky Downs Race. It was so much fun, and a shout-out to Alan Schramm, who was the organizer. And we did have a great time at Soup for the Soul. Sunday was the AFL-CIO spaghetti dinner, as well as Sunday evening at eight o'clock, a group of students in Oberlin organized a rally for the twenty-one ninety-two employees who, whose jobs are in jeopardy. I attended, was able to basically just watch as, as these really creative organizers have rallied together. They are breaking into subgroups and going to make sure that their voices are heard. I heard more than once the comment that we are not just here for education, we are supposed to be taught civil responsibility, and they are questioning the values and the mission statement of Oberlin College. So, it was a, it was worth the evening drive to Oberlin to be there to support them.
You said they also talked about how the custodial staff or some of the employees there helped them. Maybe you can tell some of those.
I certainly will. The students got up when they had an opportunity to give a comment or to lend reasoning or just support for the effort. They would get up, and they would comment about specific employees, whereby one student said, "You know, an employee stayed after work so they could take me to a doctor's appointment." Another student said, "Every morning when I get, when I leave my room, my staff custodial person's there, asking me how my day is, really treating me like a child, more than just a student in the building." And the love they have and the relationship with these folks, they're not going to see that from vendor services. So, I'm hoping we're going to see a, a better conclusion to all this. Let's see, one thing I do want to add about the recovery court, I was informed last night the story of one of the graduates. And when my colleagues talk about what they, these individuals overcome, one of the graduates yesterday was a young man whose sister was born in Marysville Prison and is in recovery now. He had to leave her on the streets because he was in recovery and was not allowed through his recovery program to even assist her. His father was the person who introduced him to heroin. His mother overdosed and died. And he's overcoming all of this, he now has his children, he owns a house. He has his wife, who is, who has also had to go through recovery. Just the battle they are fighting. So, we look to the Mars Board to just reach these folks. Let's find new solutions, new avenues, methods of helping to restore the life. And the, the resounding message was, as in, while they're in recovery, they should strive to build a life that they just don't want to lose.
Yeah, that was good.
Other than that, I just have a shout-out for the Lorraine County Public Health. The new Ohio's infant mortality rates came in this morning, and while they dipped in Ohio, Lorraine County still seems to be leading in the progress. Ohio averages fifteen point six, it was, and it dropped to thirteen point nine. Lorraine went from five to, somewhere between five and six point one. One of the glaring issues is that our African-American population still is two and a half to three times higher. But we're happy to see that Lorraine County Board of Health is doing so well. And the two, still the two most common issues are premature birth and defects. And the goal is just getting children past age one. So, shout-out to them on the good work. Thank you.
Okay, Tuesday at nine thirty, we'll have a Commissioners' meeting regarding the annexation, and then we'll meet again on the fourth for correspondence.
I move the reading be waived.
Second discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.